Good evening, good evening and welcome. Mr. Meyer, would you lead us in the pledge?
Please stand. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. We welcome those who are here for purposes of addressing the board at the proper time and in the order of their request. For those who have not already submitted a request, we have provided forms in the back of the room and also have additional copies here in front at the Assistant Secretary's position. If you wish to speak during the meeting, please fill out a form indicating your name and the agenda item you wish to address. You may also make a request to give testimony on an item not listed for discussion today. However, full discussion on any item not listed on the agenda will have to be delayed until such time as the item can be publicly posted in advance as a regular agenda item. If you wish to ask questions, please address them to the Chair and not to individual members of the board, to the staff. The Board has been meeting in closed session regarding matters listed on today's closed session agenda and wishes to report that the Board voted to approve, in closed session today, the Board took the following reportable actions. The Board voted to approve a resignation and general release agreement with a permanent certificated teacher resolving all claims between the parties. The vote was unanimous with all five members of the Board voting to approve. The Board voted to approve a settlement and general release agreement providing for the reinstatement, consideration, and a mutual release of claims involving a certificated teacher. The vote was unanimous with all five members participating in the vote. Public hearing, there is none. Call for agenda items for separate action adoption of the agendas posted. Chris?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the Board. We are requesting to pull Item 10 on the Purchasing and Contract A report. So when you vote, we would, everything but that item on the A.
Item 10?
On the Purchasing and Contract A.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion?
I move approval of the agenda as amended.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion is approved, five to zero. Approval amendments?
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion is approved unanimously. We are now at Communications and there are a few people in the room that we want to recognize, our retirees. Your name will be called by one of our Board members and you'll be asked to come up to the podium. They'll say a few nice things about you. And then you'll be asked to shake our hands up at the front here and go back to the podium and make any remarks that you feel that you appropriate. So, starting with Ms. Kerr.
Yes. I'm delighted to invite up Eduardo Baligat. Is Eduardo here tonight?
Thank you, dear.
From Jordan?
Okay.
Okay, we'll make sure that he gets this.
Dr. Benitez?
Yes, it's my pleasure to invite Ramona Hyde up to the podium.
No? You must have forgotten the date, I'll tell you. Okay. We're gonna get lucky before this is over with. Mr. Meyer?
Well, it's my honor to invite Tamara Laramie and I hope Tamara is here. Very good.
Yay!
Whereas Tamara Laramie is retiring after 34 years of dedicated service to the students of the Long Beach Unified School District and where she served the students of the district as a teacher, a teacher on special assignment in career education, Palms, and special education offices, and at the School for Adults and at Alvarado, Lincoln, Buffamant-Carver Schools, and where she's done a masterful job in engaging students by using different strategies to focus their attention and interest, creating a climate of support, respect, and encouragement, and where she's an excellent teacher who was instrumental to the success of the award-winning Community-Based English Tutoring Program, helping adult English students, learners, and their children as she shared her skills ably as a mentor to new teachers
been doing in the district.
in the program, and where she's conscientious about checking the engagement to make sure
It's great. Thank you for this opportunity to share my reflections on the past 34 years of teaching in LBUSD.
all students are working to their potential.
Working for this district offered the chance to take advantage of a broad range of assignments
And by using positive reinforcements, she has created powerful environments highly conducive
and to take on new challenges with each one. From positions, it took me from teaching TK through second grade and adult school students
to learning. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Long Beach Unified
to mentoring fellow teachers and college aides.
School District commends and expresses deep gratitude to Tamara Laramie for her significant
I have grown both as an educator and an individual, but have also been able to help others to pursue and achieve their goals.
and lasting contributions to the education of thousands of students.
In assisting others in reaching their goals, I was able to live out my dream of contributing Congratulations. and making a difference.
Thank you, Laramie, for all the --
While I was pursuing that goal, it was also my privilege to work with many caring, involved
Congratulations.
Thank you for your important work. parents, as well as talented, compassionate, and hard-working educators. She looks too young to retire. As I reflect on how most of my adult life has been spent in education, it has also been a wonderful career to have had in terms of job stability and time to spend with loved ones. Thank you again for allowing me this time to share, and now, on to my next adventure. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Craighead?
I have, I don't see Juan Garcia, he's not, he didn't, okay. Then we will make sure that he gets this.
Okay, for our retiree. You have a guest here?
My mom.
Your mom, okay. And your daughter?
Regeneration.
Well, if you want to stay here with us, you can. We're gonna continue meeting. But if you want to go out and celebrate, you're, you're welcome to do that as well. Thank you, thank you very much.
Excuse me, Dr. Williams, we had a couple of people come in late, I'm wondering if maybe they would be another retiree?
If you are one of the retirees and you just walked in, would you just raise your hand so we know that you are?
Ramona or Eduardo?
No, okay. All right, moving along. Public testimony on items listed on the agenda, I do not have any requests. Staff report, there is none. Public testimony on items not listed, I do have one request. Alicia Lindon?
Hello, my name is Alicia Lindon and I am a parent from Prisk Elementary School. I am speaking to you today because I want to bring a very important issue to your attention. I have a seven-year-old child who receives special education services and has an IEP, which he has had since he was four years old. In the past year, more disabilities were diagnosed and added to his IEP, thus began RSP services. My child receives RSP and speech therapy services a total of eight times per week. When I inquired about what services would be available for my student during the summertime, I was quite surprised to be informed that there would be nothing available. Apparently, the only services available for the special education students over the summer is for the students who are considered, quote, "high need," end quote. I am assuming that the students that are deemed as high need are those who are in special day classes and/or cannot function on their own on a day-to-day basis. I do understand the needs of those students I've described. However, on the other hand, how can one determine that other students with IEPs do not have a high enough need to receive any type of services during the summer? How can we say that a child, my child, who needs services eight times per week, does not need any special education services during the summer? Even if the services are 30 minutes to an hour, just a few days a week, something should be offered. His RSP teacher was great and did send home a summer work packet, but as parents know, it can be like pulling teeth sometimes to get our kids to do homework, and this is even harder task with a child who has learning disabilities. I was recently in a six-week parent leadership academy put on by Long Beach Forward and the Mental Health Department of Long Beach with other parents in Long Beach, and we were asked to name a topic of interest that we would like to change within our community, in which I named this very topic. After that, we were, the group was to choose, everyone was to choose two topics listed that were our individual top choices. To my surprise, this topic was a top choice of the entire group. Out of 12 listed, it was a top choice in the entire class. Clearly, other parents in our community have the same concerns as I do, which is why I'm bringing this to you today. I am asking the Long Beach Unified School District to create and implement summer educational services for our special education students. This, I'm sorry. Studies show that the students do not retain everything they learned over the summer, and this is even more impactful for students that have special needs. So, with the district's mission to support personal and intellectual successes of every student every day, this is not supporting them, you know, supporting their success. We have to do better as a district and as a community in this area, and I'm hoping that bringing this to your attention will begin a conversation and some changes will be implemented for this upcoming school year and those to follow. Our students do deserve to be fully supported and their success depends on the extra support that they can receive. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. We are now at Business Items Personnel. Mr. Meyer?
Yes, thank you. I present the following proposed actions prepared by the Deputy Superintendent of Education Services, approved and recommended by the Superintendent. Appointments 345, leaves of absence 10, suspension without pay 1, separation deceased 1, resignations 25, retirement 7, amendment 6, recessions 1. Certificated personnel, appointments 71, in-service changes 28, leaves of absence 13, resignations 3, retirements 5, amendments 3, recessions 2, and I recommend approval.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion is approved unanimously. Instruction?
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, again, thank you to OCIPD for all of their hard work over the summer. Two really exciting things in here. The approval of Introduction to Fire Science, and I believe there's Introduction to Principles of Law for Peace Academy, and a Law Enforcement 1-2 class to support the new public service pathway that we're starting at Jordan High School. So, an exciting development for our kids and for our community.
Yep, and we have a couple of other CTE offerings and music, performing arts offerings, but I also wanted to highlight the art studio at Stevenson Elementary School. It's funded by Miller Grant, and Ms. Rumeon runs the art studio there, touches 700 students, every single student at Stevenson, every two weeks. And I want to emphasize that it is a grant-funded arts program, but I think it's a model that doesn't cost a lot of money. I think she spends anywhere between $1,500 and $2,000 in supplies. She's there as a TOSA and then the other part is covered for her salary, but the impact that that program has had on that school, for those students, and for that community is not, you know, is immeasurable. Parent engagement is up, students' emotional, social and emotional learning has drastically improved. It's a model that's been shared with a few other schools. So I would just ask our Board to look at that program as one that can be replicated at some of our other school sites, particularly in a time where the arts can have a huge impact on our highest-needs students. So, congratulations to Stevenson for that grant proposal being awarded by the Miller Foundation.
I also had a quick question on Item 8 for the Superintendent. The approval of the guidelines for parents and students at the handbook, I know when I first started in this district, as a parent, we actually used to get a physical copy. That's a lot of paper that we're not using anymore, but it is available online every year. Wondering if there's any substantive changes from last year to this year, or is it just kind of an updating based on legal issues?
It's just updated on legal issues. It is much larger than it's been in the past, and, but the parents do have access to it, and there are hard copies available for those who want.
Okay, that's great, thank you.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The motion is approved unanimously. Finance Report A?
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion is approved unanimously. Finance Report B?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I recuse myself from participation in Finance Report B on the consent calendar. I have a potential financial interest under Government Code 1091 and 87100. My husband works for a subcontractor who has done work for these payees.
Discussion?
Actually, move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion is approved unanimously. Financing and Contract Reports B?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I recuse myself from participation in Purchasing Contract Reports B. On the consent calendar, I have a potential financial interest under Government Code 1091 and 87100. My husband works for a subcontractor who has done work for the payees.
Okay.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion is approved unanimously. Purchasing and Contract Reports B?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I recuse myself from participation in Purchasing Contract Reports B. On the consent calendar, I have a potential financial interest under Government Code 1091 and 87100. My husband works for a subcontractor who has done work for the payees.
Okay.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The motion is approved unanimously. Finance Report A?
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion is approved unanimously. Finance Report B?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I recuse myself from participation in Finance Report B on the consent calendar. I have a potential financial interest under Government Code 1091 and 87100. My husband works for a subcontractor who has done work for these payees.
Discussion?
Actually, move approval.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have 4-0 in favor with one abstention. Business Department Report?
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion is approved unanimously. Purchasing and Contract Report A?
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion is approved unanimously. Purchasing and Contract Reports B?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I recuse myself from participation in Purchasing Contract Reports B. On the consent calendar, I have a potential financial interest under Government Code 1091 and 87100. My husband works for a subcontractor who has done work for the payees.
Okay.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion is approved, 4-0 with one abstention. Superintendent Items?
Yes, Mr. President and members of the Board, I'm pleased to recommend that the following student be readmitted to the schools within the school district. Student 123, and the student would be assigned to the appropriate school.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion is approved unanimously.
Under administrative assignments, staff is recommending the following management promotions. Desiree Lee, who is a new hire to mentoring supervisor in our EduCare program. Astrid Feist, who's a new hire to the Early Learning Center manager position with Head Start, and Rosa Alba Gonzalez, who's a new hire to the program specialist position in Head Start.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion is approved unanimously.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I just noticed that one of our retirees has come in.
Walked in?
Mr. Juan Garcia.
Okay, so.
Ms. Craighead.
Okay.
Can we take that item out of order, Mr. Attorney?
Mr., we're okay? Thank you, Brent. Go ahead.
Oh, Ms. Craighead has it.
Actually, that's me. Mr. Garcia, will you come to the podium? It is my honor to read this resolution, and I am glad you are here. Whereas Juan Garcia is retiring after 20 years of dedicated service to the students of the Long Beach Unified School District, and whereas he has served the students of the district as an instructional assistant for the Office of Curriculum, Instruction and Professional Development, and at Milliken, Nieto, Herrera, Renaissance, and Hudson Schools, and whereas he was conscientious and following through on the tasks, he was given and could always be depended on, upon, depended upon to complete them with thoroughness and professionalism, and his dependability and trustworthiness were well-known to those around him. And whereas he is a cheerful and efficient employee who anticipated the needs of staff at his schools and sites, most recently providing valued technology and website support at the Teacher Resource Center, including during the transition to the MIPD Professional Development System. And whereas with his pleasant demeanor, he is quick to respond when needed and is conscientious in his work habits, in his ability to keep a cool head, to meet complicated challenges, has helped to create powerful learning and training which has benefited students throughout the district. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Long Beach Unified School District commends and expresses deep gratitude to Juan Garcia for his significant and lasting behind-the-scenes contributions to the education of thousands of students. I miss you so much.
That's the best-looking shirt in the house.
Thank you very much.
You gotta miss you, right? You gotta miss you.
it's really interesting that, to hear my life flash before my ears. In any case, it is bittersweet, and I'm going to say I'm not leaving Long Beach, because you will see me again, okay? But I always believe that I am where I need to be. One very interesting situation that happened, and I have to say that, I was celebrating a friend's birthday at a restaurant, and who should be in the next booth finishing her dinner, and they're coming to me saying, "Mr. Garcia." I was so surprised to see Pat Jernigan, who is one of my first principals, who I respect highly, and again, I say, "I am where I need to be." I have had the time of my life at Long Beach Unified. I've been able to do what I've wanted to do, and that is to pay back the community. I was a student of LA to begin with, ended my education in Orange County, but came back, and I'm so glad that I did. I really am appreciative of the experiences that I've had, having gone through elementary, middle school, high school, and then going back to Milliken and having had the experience of OCIPD, and seeing the benefits of all the efforts of my family at OCIPD come to fruition at high school at Milliken. Again, I really appreciate my time at Long Beach, and you will see me again. Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you. We, we did say to the other retiree that they were at liberty to leave, and, but if you want to stay and be part of this, you're welcome, so we'll let you make that decision. We're at unfinished business, there is none. New business, approved program support consulting firms?
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion is approved unanimously. Chief Business and Financial Officer Employment Contract, Chris?
Yes, Mr. President and members of the Board, under SBE 1436, there's a statement we have to read when contracts for personnel come to the Board like this. So this agenda item involves the amendment of an agreement for the Chief Business and Financial Officer. The amendment does not increase the total amount of the district's fiscal obligations above the existing employment agreement and previous amendments, except for the extension of the one additional year.
Need a motion?
I move approval.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion is approved unanimously.
Mr. Chair and members of the Board, if I can take a little liberty for one moment on this item, thank you, first of all, for voting to extend Yumi's contract. Yumi, I just want to publicly thank you for the leadership that you provide to your team and that you provide the support to all of us here in the district. We couldn't do our job on the instructional side of the House if we didn't have the great partnership that we have with the business side of the House, and this is unique and our schools benefit from the collaboration. And so, I know that I speak on behalf of the executive staff, and I know I speak on behalf of the principals because they tell me on a daily basis how appreciative they are, but you make our life enjoyable and easy, so thank you, and I'm glad you agreed to stay another year, so.
Yes, Yumi, congratulations, and we know what good shape we're in as a district compared to some of the other districts that we hear about with problems with pay and all that good stuff, so we, we know that. Because of your work, we're in really great hands with you at the helm, so congratulations. We didn't approve that yet, did we? We did? So you're legitimate. Okay. Resolution 082119-A relating to candidate's statement in cause for governing Board election call for March 3, 2020.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, is this a question for Brent, potentially? Don't worry, Brent, it's not gonna be like our last conversation about it.
Don't bet on it, Brent.
All right, just for that, Mr. Meyer, I'm gonna reframe my question here. So, Brent, just a clarification, is this, because we have to pass this because the election cycle has moved to March 3, or is there a change in the word limit? As I read it, it's 200 words, it looks like something we already had, but is it because of the change to the March election cycle? This is a resolution which you pass in advance of every one of our elections.
Okay.
So the only change in here would be the date.
Okay.
But regardless of the date, you would have been passing a resolution like this.
Got it, okay.
That was it? Easy.
He made it easy on you today, Brent.
What about that never-ending staircase that we were talking about?
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? The motion is approved unanimously. Resolution 082119-B approving the proposed project and adopting the negative declaration of the Kettering Elementary School security facing project, fencing project. Chris, you wanna just provide a little background on that because we don't normally see these when it comes to fencing?
Sure, I'll have Alan give the detail, he's actually been handling this. So, Alan, thank you. So, Alan, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, board members, staff, and community. Today, what you have in front of you is a project description and a notice of exemption that we're processing for the Kettering project. This is a little unique on a fencing project that we bring this to the board, but due to some of our concerns related, that were voiced to us by the community of the Kettering, around the Kettering community, they specifically requested that the district take a deeper look at what we're doing there, and provide some more insight, and allow the public to comment towards that project. We followed the rules of the California Environmental Quality Act, better known as SEQA, to really engage in the community in a more thorough fashion, to really try to, with an attempt to address some of the concerns that were voiced to us. So we're presenting to you today the final results of that, and a recommendation to move forward with the project with some minor tweaks to it.
Thank you, Alan.
This is very similar to what you, as a board, voted on to enclose all of our schools and for the security measures, so this is the exact same type of program.
Thank you, thank you both.
Thank you.
Move approval, second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the motion is approved unanimously. We are now into report of the board members. Mrs. Kerr.
See, I changed seats, and I realize I'm gonna be first up sometimes. So, it has been a great summer, and so for those who have returned to work, welcome back. To those who are sending students off to school as I did Monday night, be well and take care of yourself. It has been a great two days of learning, once again, with the staff here. I just want to thank all the departments for their continued good work, their answers to hard questions, and their willingness to look at the work ahead of us, as well as celebrating the things that we are proud of. So, I think on that note, I don't have much else. That's all, thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Kerr. Dr. Benitez?
I echo Board Member Kerr's comments. Thank you to everyone that put together our presentations, super productive, informative, and lively two days, and I also want to thank all the members of our community that showed up for our conversations and presentations, so thank you, great two days, and a great way to kick off our new academic year.
Thank you very much, Dr. Benitez. Mr. Meyer?
I want to thank Jill Baker and Jay Camerio and other staff members who put together a staff engagement, what, last week was it, Jill? Yeah, a workshop on equity, and it was a delight to see it take place. I was a little tickled, you know, all of our dynamite administrators were there with their little laptops, taking notes. I had my little black notebook and my black pen, I was taking notes the old-fashioned way.
Are you telling us, are you telling us you have a little black book?
I do, I do. Let me give you a few snippets of what this was all about. The theme really was equity. What does equity look like in leadership? If any district in the US is poised to close the achievement gap, it's Long Beach came for it from the Council of Great City Schools. Ask how are the children? Until we can say, "All of the children are well," we have a lot of work to do. Begin to develop a shared understanding of what equity means, and this is interactive, so our administrators are talking about this and using various models to put it in place. On we go to, what is the language of equity? So, on it went, and the thrust was genuine, the engagement was wholehearted, and I applaud Jill and her staff for putting this, it's a difficult challenge, but thank you very much, Dr. Baker.
Thank you, John. Let me just echo that, I did attend a portion of that, and I'd say, it's a subject that really brings out a lot of emotion, and that was evident in terms of some of the folks who spoke. It still talks about the fact that we've got a long ways to go still in this country, and the discussion at that workshop really brought that out, but I was pleased to hear that we were engaging our folks in that discussion. And it's always a timely discussion, even though it's a difficult one, so, you know, thank you all, one and all, for the work you did on bringing that together, and somehow people were able to agree to disagree in that session, so that was wonderful. Again, on the board workshops, 15 years in the district, and these workshops just continue to provide a wealth of information, and even challenge us to look at things a little differently. So, I know for all of you who prepare to do these workshops and bring that information forward to us, we appreciate it very much. Is Brina Pinkerton here? Okay, just sit right there, stand right there. I just want to congratulate you, one of our IOAs in the district in the Office of the Student Support, I'm sorry, School Support Services, you just completed your BA degree at Pepperdine, right? So congratulations, is that your daughter? So you work and went to school and got your degree, and while you're raising a family. So again, just want to say congratulations for that, and well done, well done. Thank you so much for being here.[1362.33][1362.36](APPLAUSE).
Yeah, you skipped me.
Oh, I did?
You did, you forgot all about me, I moved over here to the end, and you skipped me.
That's because you moved, you changed positions.
Yeah. But I was gonna let, but I was gonna let you go on, I mean, you were doing a good job, but...
Go, go, my apologies.
No, we're not gonna let that happen. I just want to echo what my colleagues have said, the last two days of workshops, workshops just emphasizes the point that no matter how many questions we ask, no matter how we ask you to raise the bar, no matter what we are demanding as far as information is concerned or data being shared, you rise to the occasion. We have the best staff that anybody could ever ask for, and the numbers bear that out. Our progress bears that out, so I just wanted to say, you know, thank you to everybody for that. Also, school starts a week from today, first day of school. Teachers will be back before then, we already have people who've been working, as we've talked about, we've already had people working all through the summer, but my message to everybody is just be careful, the traffic is horrible, especially the first day of school, be very careful. Let's treat our kids as the, you know, precious gifts that they are, don't drop them off across the street while people are driving crazy back and forth. And also, football starts this Friday, that is so exciting, so take advantage of everything, let's embrace the fall. It's not quite here yet, but it, you know, we're getting a sneak peek.
Thank you, Diane, I do apologize for that. I wanted to also just let people know that at an event at Long Beach, Cal State University Long Beach, it's the mayor provided a certificate of recognition to the school district, and I was there, so I received it on behalf of the district. But it's for the many years of collaboration to enhance cultural and science-based education through the Trio Cultural Exchange and Environmental Summit programs. That's the exchange programs, where we send some students to Japan, and they stay with host families, and they send students to us, and every year they celebrate that. So this is the certificate to the district from the mayor for our participation in that program. And the last thing I just want to say is how much we appreciate what the Office of Media Services has done for the last three days, couple of days, in covering our board meetings and workshops, and thank you, guys, even getting us to live streaming. We appreciate your efforts, your work on behalf of the district. I can't say anything about raises for you, I'll be in trouble.
As we've been sitting, they've been standing the whole time.
Congratulations, and thank you so much for your hard work. We are now at superintendent's report.
Yes, just a couple items. One, first of all, I want to thank all staff who have worked so hard over the summer on numerous projects, but I do want to call out two departments. One, the Facilities Department, for everything they've done with, you know, our Measure E projects to our deferred maintenance projects, to get our schools up and operating is phenomenal. For those who are watching this, you can watch the tape of the board workshop, that will go into detail on all the different programs. To our Technology Department for refreshing, which means purchasing 32,000 additional Chromebooks so that we can send the old Chromebooks home this coming month, so if you think about that, it's 64,000 pieces of technology that were coming in and out in a very, very short period of time. The other piece is that at the managers' meeting on Monday, I shared our opportunities for this year, but I also talked about self-care, and that's going to be my mantra for the year. Everyone has to have self-care, and self-care comes in many different forms, so we all need to hold ourselves accountable. So whatever your issue of self-care, whether it's running a marathon, or reading a book, or just watching cartoons like I like to, it's, you have to do that and take care of yourself. And the other piece, I want to thank our Board of Education. People ask us all the time about how we do what we do, and we do it because we have great board members, and staff, and our 10,000 employees would not be able to do what they do, because we, as you said, Mrs. Craighead, we hold everyone to really high standards, all of us, and we have a lot of work to do, which we've acknowledged, but we couldn't do it without the guidance and the support that you five provide all of us, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris. We are now at announcements.
If I may, I would just like to wish our staff, all of our teachers, support staff, to have a great year, and know that every board member up here fully supports you and is willing to come to your assistance in any way possible, so have a great year, everybody.
And also, at our board workshops today, there was some conversation about making opportunities for our students to get internships and work. Well, tomorrow, they will be, Long Beach Call will be celebrating the summer internship program at Browning High School at 4:30, so if you can make it out to be part of that celebration, that would be fantastic, to show your support for the work that the Long Beach Call program is doing on behalf of our students. And with that, entertain a motion for German.
Mr. Chair, I would ask that we adjourn in the memory of Jean Egan, speaking of Long Beach Call, we lost a giant this summer.
Good, good point.
Who has meant a ton to this district for a really long time. So as we celebrate her great work tomorrow with those students, if we could close in her honor.
Thank you so much for that. All right. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
All right, we are adjourned, thank you.